Chair.
Kathy Riley, Chair.
Mark Branco, Superintendent.
Amy Oakes, School Committee Member.
Jessica Delisi, School Committee Member.
Okay, our first item tonight is, as always, or as usual, the approval of minutes from November 13th. Has everybody had a chance to review those? Anybody, any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, now's our chance for a public comment. Would anybody like to come up front and give a public comment? This time, I think, nobody's actually public here. Do we have any correspondence at this time?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any donations at this time?
We do not.
Do we have any personnel at this time?
We do not.
And it doesn't look like we have a student advisory representative.
She was here.
I thought I saw them.
Mia was here.
We can move it when it-
It's coming right now.
Oh, we come, there we go. Just in the nick of time.
We're gonna, we're gonna wait for you, because you're up.
It's your turn.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Can you just introduce yourself to everybody one time, before you jump in?
Henry Park, Student Representative. This week, I think there's a lot going on in the school district. As you may know, there's a lot of concerts, there's the band concert, band orchestra, and chorus concert coming up. There's, today, I think this Monday was the first week of, first day of winter sports. So that's pretty exciting. So there's a lot of exciting stuff, I think, going on in the school district, so I think that's good. One thing the school, I mean, the Student Advisory Committee has been working on is improvements on the library. So we've come up with like a general consensus of how we feel, and like what might be the issue with it. And if I read it here, "We feel that there are no clear policies in place currently in terms of conduct or behavior within library grounds. Our concern is that the currently established rules of the libraries are not well known enough, and executive decisions and management of conduct and behavior within these grounds are mostly established by the teachers, staff, or administrators that are in the library at the respective moment. The students are suggesting that there be established policies that clearly state how the library should be utilized and managed. We believe that these new man, new policies being enacted before possible renovations, as we talked about, Dr. Branco, is important in order to enforce like new library culture, because as of right now, the library culture is not really like the best, like it's got like a connotation to it. So that's how we feel, and we'll be following up with that."
Have you already met with Principal Rose and started those conversations?
Yeah, we've come up with some rough ideas about how we could go about those changes. And we did meet with some other sources. We're planning on meeting with some student leaders who might be able to give us some more input about what other students might want, in terms of the new library culture that would be instated. But yeah, in terms of like contacting, we did meet with-
Okay, so I think that would be important, that you guys work-
Yeah.
Around kind of visioning for that space, so to speak?
Yeah.
Right, so that the student, there's a student voice in the visioning. And then you have two members of school committee here who are also on the policy subcommittee. And so we have a lot of conversations about the difference between policy and practice.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna coach the student leaders, make sure you're using library practices and expectations, and not the word "policy," because the only place policy exists in a public school district is in the school committee policy book. So as we start to do that work at the high school and the middle school, it'll be around practices and expectations of the library. And then you could talk about culture and visioning, and I think that'd be a good opportunity for you to have some student voice in there.
Because the whole basis around this claim was that we looked in the student handbook and other like expectations of students, and we didn't really find anything established in terms of like expectations around the library, which is the only reason why. I'm sorry if we misused "policy."
No, I think it's, I think it's better than that.
Henry, thanks for your report. I wonder if you'll be updating us later this year about your conversations. I think all of us probably would agree that the library is a really important space in a building, and students should feel comfortable, and it should be a center for students. And so it's a great topic for your committee to take on. It's a really worthy goal, and I think we'll be interested to hear, right, where your conversations go and what thoughts you have. And I bet Mrs. Rose is really happy to have students who are interested in this kind of a conversation. It's great. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
So if you could entertain a motion, maybe to take 10A, the recommendation of Essex Tech School Committee appointment, out of order?
Okay. Do I have a motion to move 10A up to the next, the next agenda item, bringing it out of order before the subcommittee updates? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So then we'd like to invite Tom Flaherty right up here to the table. So all you're gonna do is press that button, it'll turn that microphone on, should pick you up. And if you don't mind just introducing yourself to the committee and the community, give us kind of a quick commercial about who you are, why you're interested in doing this. And then if the committee has questions for you, they'll, they'll take care of that for you.
Sure, happy to do it, happy to be here. My name is Tom Flaherty, I'm at 5 Shetland Road in Rockport. And I have to blame this primarily on my next door neighbor, who formerly held this role. And he talked to me about it on a number of occasions, and I became interested in it. Our daughter is at Rockport High, she's a junior this year, we love Rockport High. But I became interested in this when Bruce told me that the position had been vacant for over a year. And he wondered if I might be interested. And in fact, I am interested in education. And in my career is, as a lawyer, has included representing schools. And so I have a fair amount of interest from a legal standpoint in it as well. And I happened to have gotten ahead of the curve with this by virtue of Bruce introducing me to the head of the school and the chair of the school committee at Essex Tech. And I have it by direct word of mouth that I would be on the Personnel Committee if, if I am chosen by this committee. And part of my practice, most of my practice, has been in employment law for over 40 years. So this kind of fits two of my greatest interests, kids and employment law. So I'm interested primarily for those reasons. And then having visited the school, I was just amazed by it. I think it's a tremendous asset. And I'd like to be able to do whatever I can do to improve Rockport's, I should say, increase the benefit to Rockport for being a, a member of the district, the Essex Tech district. And I guess that's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions.
Turn myself off, there we go. Welcome, I'm glad that you're, that you're interested in this, and it sounds like they have a path planned for you already with, with the Personnel Committee, that's awesome. What does, do you know what the Personnel Committee does?
I believe that Personnel Committee acts to develop policies relating to the staff. And perhaps, and this I don't know for sure, at some level deal with issues that arise, probably not individual issues, but issues that arise relating to faculty and staff.
I don't know what it does either, so I was, I was genuinely asking.
Yeah.
It is a fabulous facility, my daughter considered it as well. We've had, we've been very happy, and we've had a number of concerns over the years. So it's glad, we're glad to have you here, and hope that we can funnel concerns through you, and all work together.
Yeah, I'd love to find a way to be a liaison, and you know, perhaps attend these meetings quarterly, or whatever, whatever this committee would like me to do.
That would be great. Yeah, go ahead.
I think sort of a question, but maybe a statement, it's really good to hear you say that, because I was going to ask if you have a sense of how other school committee members from other communities sort of gather the concerns from the district, or the ideas from the district to then bring back to the Essex Tech.
I don't know that yet.
We haven't really had much of that, we've had a yearly visit, but not much, not much conversation or back and forth, or much information coming to us.
I wondered about that, but I do not know what other districts do, and I think there should be a regular communication.
That's something we can also sort of look into and find out.
Yeah.
How often does that, how often will you be meeting with the committee?
Once a month.
Once a month.
Depending on the committee I wind up on, if I'm, again, selected, that would be either once a month, or once every other month.
I think it's wonderful that you're interested and willing to take on another meeting once a month, and then another one maybe once a month, and then perhaps to come back and visit with us four times a year. I don't think I've heard an update from a representative on this committee in the year and a half that I've been on this school committee here. So I really look forward to learning more as you go forward and-
Yeah, and I thought I might, again, if it seems appropriate, after I learn more about it, meet with the students, because only a handful of Rockport students currently attend Essex Tech. And it would be good to hear what they have to say.
Do I have a motion to recommend the appointment of Tom Flaherty as the Rockport- And I keep doing it over and over again. Okay, I'll start over again, so that every, the audience can hear us. Do I have a motion to recommend the appointment of Tom Flaherty as the Rockport member of the Regional District School Committee for Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School?
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So the recommendation will be forwarded to the Rockport Town Moderator, who will make the official appointment, that's in the bylaws of Essex Tech, and he will contact you.
Thank you very much, thank you all. Look forward to meeting with you again.
See you again. You are not obligated to stay for the rest of the-
You'll have enough of your own.
Yes, considering. Okay, so now we'll move on to eight, subcommittee updates? Okay, we have the Policy Subcommittee update.
My computer just froze.
Do you want, you want? So the Policy Subcommittee did meet since our last meeting. We, we reviewed Section I on instruction. We have, it was a section we've been continuing, it's a very large section. So we almost made it all the way through, but not quite. So we will continue with that section next time we meet. The plan is to finish that section at our next Subcommittee meeting, and then bring that forward to the full committee. We also looked at the Policy ADF, which is on health and wellness. So I don't know, Dr. Branco, if you want to speak a little bit about that one specifically, and the, kind of the idea behind it, and the changes, and why?
Sure, as we're about to get the new Wellness Committee off the ground, Advisory Committee, I was doing some homework just to make sure we're, we're ready, and recognize that as we were going through our review, we had one set of policy on the school district website, and Alicia had pulled an old one from another location, which must have been buried in a link somewhere else on that website. So we had originally updated them with the old policy, so I wanted to make sure we went back to the new policy, so that when we hand this off to the new committee, that we have some good work. So we kind of went through a policy update again tonight on that particular policy that is much more reflective of our current practice.
And it's a fairly comprehensive policy, so it was good to spend some time with it.
And then when that new, when that new Advisory Committee comes together, they'll start to wrap the head around goals and, and work. And then one of their charges also will be to come together and come up with sort of a timeline for review for that policy, knowing that it has just been approved. They won't have to dig into a policy right, they can actually dig into some work that's meaningful.
Can I ask, we did have the, the first meeting last week of just a few, to kind of get the rest of the committee together, and Deb Noakes had mentioned that she is going to be having a review, and that the old policy was not sufficient for her review. And I, and I let her know that the full policy manual doesn't get, gets voted on, we're hoping end of January.
After the first.
After the first. But I would think that maybe she could pull the, can she pull the new one before it's voted on, or no?
So what we can probably do is, we said we'd provide the other committee with a draft, we can provide her with a draft to demonstrate to the auditors that this is being taken care of, and it's really a formality, that we just have to do an inform vote all at once.
Okay, that would be-
Just make sure you, send me an email, so I know.
Yes, I will for sure. Okay, thank you.
The next Subcommittee is the Communication Advocacy Subcommittee had a meeting?
We did, we had our first meeting, Jess Delisi and I, and the Superintendent. And remember, this is a Subcommittee that was formed because of our commitment as a board to focus this year. One of our school committee goals is to focus on communication and advocacy. And so this was our first Subcommittee meeting. We had an overarching conversation about what our goals are, who we are communicating to. Certainly, we think Rockport Public Schools has really good communication to students and teachers, and we, we want to add to that. We talked about some nuts and bolts strategies, including the In the Loop newsletter. Is, is the word newsletter right, or is that right? Okay, just checking. And the Superintendent has a postcard that will go out as a way to raise money for this new publication through advertising from local merchants. So we're excited to see that take shape. And then I think the next conversation, which I think we started, is what is the information that we need to share out to the community? Who in the community wants to hear from us? We had a very interesting aha, even in our first meeting, I think, where we talked about how important it is for elementary school parents to know what's happening at the high school level, because we know that elementary parents are making decisions right now about which high school their students will go to. So we had a really good meeting, we look forward to the next one. I think we'll meet once a month, and we're excited to see In the Loop start to take shape. I think one of the questions, frankly, will have to do with capacity, and who has enough time to begin to write the wonderful articles that will appear in, in the loop. And so I think that's to be determined. But it was a good meeting, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thanks. Are there any questions?
In the past, we've kind of talked about maybe having a, a full committee retreat regarding communication. So I'm wondering, is that something you guys talked about? Or do you, do you think, for now, it's better just to let the Subcommittee work and go forward with, with just the Subcommittee work, and kind of see how that is? Or any, what are your thoughts about having a-
I think that's a great question, for the benefit of people who may not know. We had a retreat before the school year started, it was very, very useful. And at that time, we all said, this was so useful, we would love to do another one. And we didn't talk about that, but I would imagine if the full school committee wanted to have another retreat focused on communication and advocacy, I think we would be supportive of that.
Absolutely.
So if I recall correctly, we had talked about reaching out to Chris Horn, who is one of the presenters at MASC. So if the school committee is interested in that, you just gotta let me know, and I don't mind starting to get that ball rolling and reach out to Chris's office, and seeing what that would look like.
Kathy, I'm looking to see if you're nodding your head, yes or no.
Sure. And I just think Amy's not giving herself enough credit. One of the other things she talked us through in that meeting is, you know, we talked about visibility, and I think that was a big aha moment for, for me, to think of us as a group that needs to be visible, and the staff, and the leadership team. If we're gonna continue to ask of the community, in a lot of ways, for support, you know, what does that look like, budget roadshow that goes out to the different community organizations? Getting out, you know, getting out to locations like farmers markets and parades, and other things that are, you know, as Chris Harret had said, it doesn't cost much to get a pop-up tent and a sign. So almost like in a no agenda situation, but just to start to let people know who we are, and start casual conversations. So I think the Subcommittee, that could be another conversation, where they could work with you all, and, and leadership team, and figure out like, what are the prime opportunities for those kind of communications throughout the, throughout the year, the calendar year in Rockport, that we can leverage a little bit?
Great. Do we have any unfinished business?
We do not.
Okay, great. So for new business, we have, we're going in order here.
We are.
The Rockport Middle High School Internship Program Update.
So we're gonna bring Mr. Eric Vent up here right now? And if I can find his slide deck, because there's a lot of them on my computer. It's gotta be this one. That's the right one, yes?
Good evening.
Hi.
Those who don't know, know I'm Eric Vent, I taught at the high school. It's my 11th year at the high school. And I'm very excited this year to have this expanded role that Dr. Branco and Mrs. Rose offered to me, to really take a hard look at the senior internship program, and see what can be done to it, to expand it, to make it really an authentic learning experience for our students. And, and see what we can do to increase how we address the needs of career education, not only for our 12th graders, but for all our students in the school. So I'm happy to be here tonight. I see that, you know, the need for a program like this, that we're calling the Capstone Program, because it's more than just internships, fulfills district missions to provide students with educational experiences, to prepare them for life after high school, as well as the vision of the district to, what is the next slide?
Yeah, you just nod at me and I'll go.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I didn't memorize it all, so I'm doing my best here. To support students, to be the type of people who are ready for success in the 21st century, being creative, being innovators, giving them the experiences that they need to really find out who they are and what kind of people they want to be. There's also, was a pragmatic reason for the revamp with the change in the bell schedule at the middle and the high school. The former way the internships had run wasn't really gonna be conducive to having students be out of the building one or two blocks all year long, when those blocks are floating throughout. So we really needed, it was, it was a great time to really take a look and see what changes could be made. So there are three components currently in the Capstone Program. There is the senior internships, there are job shadow days that we are planning, and as well as taking a look at more universal career education in the high school. I'm gonna talk first about the senior internships, because that's the biggest component that we have right now. The senior internships are available to all 12th grade students, who are in good academic standing, who are in, you know, on target to graduate, and that's not only having their credits, but having a community service hours done, and whatever other responsibilities they need for that. We feel that their placements should be new experiences for the students. It doesn't mean that they can't be at, in a familiar location, but their responsibilities should be something that's new or different, something that's gonna stretch, challenge them, or expose them to a new facet or aspect of that career. It's designed to run for 30 hours a week, for six weeks. And this is in lieu of taking classes. So in ideal situation, student will be done with, a senior will be done with their classes at the end of quarter three, and that first day of quarter four, they're onsite in their internship. There are of course some exceptions that we need to make to that, because AP exams run into May, some students maybe do enrollment courses, VHS courses go into May, and we don't want to gut the music department, so that they don't have, you know, their first cello playing in the orchestra concert. And recently, the issue has come up about how Project Lead the Way fits into that. And that question hasn't been answered, but I hope to be able to work with the Project Lead the Way teachers to, again, make this program work for everyone, and benefit everyone, and give them what they need. There are also alternative options that may be possible, and this is really with an eye towards those students who may be in multiple AP courses, who may not see or really find it available to them to only do a 15-hour internship, to do some other type of work, whether it is volunteer work with a nonprofit, or picking some project on their own. And I do this, I live in Manchester by the Sea, and my son graduated Manchester Essex High School two and a half years ago, and that was the situation he was in. He didn't have, you know, the time in his schedule to do a full internship, because he was taking three AP courses and things like that. And he, with some friends of his, they learned how to do podcasts. And they, you know, picked a fun topic, and they researched, and they learned the skills needed, and they just had a great time. But also, they learned some valuable skills, and all of that, they can take with them. So I don't want students who are, you know, involved in all our other programs to miss out on this opportunity. So we do have that availability for alternative options, if possible. So the way this has been rolled out, I first met with the seniors and the juniors last spring, during a high school assembly, to let them know of changes coming. I've met with the senior class twice during the fall, during the Flex Explore Blocks. I've been having one-on-one meetings with seniors who have wanted to ask more questions, or who needed some assistance in either, hey, I wanna do this type of thing, where can I go? Or I have no idea what I wanna do, what, you know, how can you help me? Which has been, you know, just a great, great time, just to sit down with them one-on-one, find out what they're interested in, and, you know, see their eyes light up as they're like, oh, I can do that? Like, yeah, let's call them, let's see what happens. They do have to submit a proposal for the internship that I review, and I contact the business, or, you know, people who would be responsible with them during that time, to clear it up. And as I said before, those internships are planned to begin April 7th, which is day one of quarter four. The students are to keep a weekly log and a reflection as they spend those six weeks. The program coordinator, which currently is myself, will make site visits, you know, to check in, to see how things are going, and that will also help us build relationships with those at the sites. So perhaps we could keep this going, and really form strong partnerships with others in our community. At the end of the six weeks, the site supervisors will give an evaluation, and the students will present to the community about what they have done during this time. The Job Shadow Days, the second component of the Capstone Program, is open to 11th and 12th graders, and it is, you know, what it sounds like. Students will be excused from classes for one day, so that they could meet with a professional in an area of their choosing. This is set for January 27th, which is the first day of quarter three, so right after the midterm exam week. And, uh... Go to the next slide, please?
Sorry.
Okay, this has also been rolled out in a similar way, but also via email and news notifications, the Viking Weekly News, to let students know what to do. This proposal is due very soon, Friday the 13th, next week, so that we could make sure we have all the arrangements set for that. And that's open to juniors and seniors, partly to get the juniors thinking more about, hey, maybe this is something I may wanna do for my internship next year, or the flip side, I don't wanna do this for my internship next year. Or I just have that one day to kind of test the waters. But also meet with a professional, I'm encouraging students to have a resume ready also, to sit down with that professional on that day, and, you know, get pointers, tips, and have those conversations now. Because of the number of students that may be involved with the Job Shadow Days, transportation may be an issue with some, so we're up to using the Rockport mini-buses to help, you know, students around if need be. We're looking at, you know, the- uh, you know, the professionals, how obviously we'll have to verify that the students actually did it, you know, because it's not a free day off. And, uh, again, I want the students to take the time to reflect upon that experience as well with this. Uh, the third part, which is still in a very, you know, stages of infancy here, um, is the career education piece. And this is really something that, once I feel good about the job shadow days and the internship process being solidified, and to really look at what we can do to help prepare our students better to enter the workforce and the skills that are needed. Uh, started doing that a little bit. I did meet with the seniors once, we talked a little bit about resumes. But I would like to see this expanded to having mock interviews, to, uh, encouraging students to start building portfolios now, building telephone skills, because who speaks on a telephone anymore? But, you know, you may, you may have to do that. Seeing how they can best leverage social media to, uh, you know, get a job or to present themselves to the outside world. And to make those connections, okay, this is what I wanna do for a career, what might be the best schooling for me at this point? If that means going to a trade school or, you know, picking a college, not just based on the name of the college, but on what services that they offer, and that, and getting students to think in those ways more. I would like to see that expand out through all four years of high school also. That is not just something, hey, you're a senior, now you gotta start thinking seriously, but to find ways where we can filter this in through ninth through 12th grade. Uh, when I entered, when I surveyed the class of 2025, I was very pleased to find that 92%, which is, is a small class, so it was roughly 39 to 40 students, were very strongly interested in taking part in the internships. Uh, so just a very small number were hesitant about that. And those who are hesitant were mainly fell into the camp of, I'm taking four AP classes, is it really gonna be worth my time to do that? Uh, so I'm continuing to have conversations with those students to say, hey, you know, you could, you know, you know, pick something that you're passionate about, you know, and spend a little time to do that. We'll, you know, we'll make it work for you. So, uh, so that was very, very encouraging. We already have some internships lined up already. Uh, this is great because they're not starting until April, so, you know, three down and 40, you know, to go. This is good. Uh, working in the food service industry, uh, Grill Friends Physical Therapy at Addison Gilbert, a student who will be, uh, uh, working on youth programs for martial arts, you know, so it's just great, exciting, exciting things. You know, those students that are inquiring about doing, um, audio and video production, and reaching out to a couple areas there, and just a lot of other, you know, fun and exciting things. And again, it's, it's so great to see the students get excited about, oh, wow, I can actually be doing this now and not have to wait till I'm 25. The initial resources that I used to help build this and to help really, you know, think, um, analytically about this, uh, I did reach out to a lot of different area schools, um, a lot on their websites and just see what they did in terms of internships. I also had some very great conversations with representatives at other schools, uh, that gave me their advice. And half the schools that actually, where I talk to people, are also going through a similar process of revamping, you know, their senior internship program. So they're taking a hard look at what are we doing, can we do it better, what's best for students here? So it's kind of exciting to feel like we're collaborating also with other schools in the area who have similar interests and, um, and I wanna see the best things happen for our students here. I've also been working a little bit, and will be doing more so in the coming weeks with the Chamber of Commerce. I have strong connections with Wellspring House and what they do with career education at Gloucester High School. And so I've been communicating with them and collaborating with them as well. And I also wanna say that I have really appreciated the support of the High School Guidance Department. They have been wonderful in supporting me in this and getting me in to see the seniors and sharing their experiences in the past, having coordinated programs like this. And so it's been really, really great. Uh, I, you know, things that are on the horizon with this is, you know, to see that we already have a list of, uh, businesses that are willing to work with our students, but seeing that grow over time, and as I said before, making those contacts with people on the sites and really forming the partnerships between the district and the businesses. I think it would be a key to, uh, success here. Looking at what Desi has available, as well as Mass Hire for Curricular Resources and Career Education, seeing what's already available out there to, uh, offer to our students. And, um, uh, I've also been in, in talks with a group from the Chamber of Commerce that does that as well. And they're ready to come right into the school and work with us. I'm like, well, let's slow down a little bit, let's actually see what's best for us, but I appreciate the offer. It's really good. And, uh, and the continued community outreach, uh, using the In the Loop, um, newsletter that was discussed earlier, I think, could be a key to help build those partnerships and just get the word out that our students will be in the communities, um, doing this kind of work. Uh, we see, you know, there's always questions when things come up and potential issues, what to do with students who do not participate in an internship if they choose not to for whatever reason. Uh, we decide they will continue to take classes or maintain a full schedule at the school. And, uh, part of that will, will look different based on the students that are there. So it's kind of a wait and see, but that is the intention at this point. We've talked about, and I just was talking about this with Dr. Branko last week, about getting the formal documentation for our site supervisors and the shadow day professionals. Just make sure everything's above board. And, um, after our conversation, Dr. Branko actually saw that Desi has a strong recommendation about doing Corey checks for this exact type of thing. And so we will be doing that, and I've already spoken with Alvin Smith in HR about that. And the concern for me is also is having that equitable access, um, for all of our students. Some students just naturally will have connections through family or friends or things like that that other students don't. So I see over time that aspect getting bigger because, uh, getting better for us because as we have students that are onsite because of connections they have, but then we form that partnership with them, that will allow other students to perhaps also have those same types of opportunities. Uh, the concern is also transportation. It's like, hey, I wanna do this, but how do I get there? And so that is a question that I, I ask every student now, like, do you have your own transportation? Will you be able to get there? And also, and then this is a point that Ruth Price in Guidance brought up to me, was that some students rely upon the school for their nourishment during the day, for breakfast and for lunch. Do we still continue to offer that? And, uh, you know, working with Deb Noakes in the cafeteria to make sure that happens, whether it means picking up a box lunch in the morning or something like that before they go to work. So these are all kind of these little details that are continuing to be thought of and worked on, we go through. Looking forward, so questions to kind of pose right now and, uh, see what we can do with this. Do we make internships a graduation requirement? I don't have the answer to that. That's above my pay grade also. And just in Manchester Essex, it is a graduation requirement, their score program that they've run for 50 years. It is expected that all students who are, again, on target to graduate, participate in this in one way or another. So that's something that we wanna say, okay, what works best for Rockport? I would love to have the student presentations at the end of the six weeks to be open to the public, and to make that, you know, really more authentic is to have it in the evening. However, it's during the week where the seniors are out every single evening, it seems like, between prom and awards nights and banquets and graduation itself. So that's a question, where does this fit in with that schedule-wise? And the question was posed, are internships actually better suited for junior year? And, um, obviously, junior year is an important year for a student's academic record. And so some may say, well, that's kind of then prohibitive to have them miss a quarter. But it doesn't mean that we can't do something more. I mean, we had the job shadow days, but can we do something else around that? So that, you know, students aren't finding out the end of their senior year, it's like, oh, wait, I don't really like what this is. I have to change my college plans now. So it's something to consider as, you know, sift through how best to meet the needs of students each year of their high school career. Hope to hold multiple job shadow days, you know, get them out at least twice into the community during the year. Again, it's another day out of school, you know, but I think it's time that could be well spent. Uh, and then also how to fit career education into all four years in the schedule. Thankfully, I'm one of the freshman seminar teachers the last couple of years, so I'm thinking about, hey, maybe next year, let's change freshman seminar a little bit and include some of this for the freshmen. How could we better use our Flex Explore time and our wind blocks to help integrate this into all four years of the school? So those are things I'm thinking about. I'd love to hear what you're all thinking about after having heard all of this. And if you have any questions, I am happy to answer to the best of my ability.
I had a question, I guess, um, when looking into some of the possibilities of where kids could go, where students could go, is there any ability for students to, that are interested in education, to work in the elementary, like, you know, to do their internship at the elementary school? I know when I was a senior in high school, I actually did my senior service at Rockport Elementary School.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
And that was.
I would, I would certainly hope so.
Yeah.
You know, that, uh, you know, that we're good enough teachers, that we make people wanna be teachers. Not everyone, but, uh, so absolutely. I would, I would say ideally, for them to do an internship in a school that they did not attend, might be better, so they can go into Gloucester, if they can go into Beverly, they can go into, you know, S, something like that. I wouldn't say it's necessarily prohibitive to, for them going over next door, but I would say when at all possible, I want them to be in an environment where they're gonna be a little more stretched and challenged than, yes, going to a place that they feel is home. But yeah, I would love to see students who are interested in education go and take an internship at an elementary school or other school, whether it's in our district or somewhere else.
I was, oh, sorry, Amy, where are you gonna? No, this is great. I think it's really, really great, and I think it, um, I, we heard from some people who had kids with great internships last year, and it was great in that, but it did bring up a lot of questions about equity and how if you sort of have those connections, you're getting a great internship. And so what is their support for kids who, is that you or is that Guidance? If kids are kind of like, I don't really know, or I don't, I wanna do this, but I don't have a connection with, are you the person that kind of guides them in that?
Yeah, so that's what I've been doing, yes, is, you know, I have a list, I know local businesses, I have a list from Guidance of others, businesses that have hosted people in the past. And so I just guide them and go, hey, let's, let's cold call, let's, let's, let's do it, let's ask. It can't hurt to ask, you know? And, uh, I often ask the student, do you wanna do the call, or would you like me to make the call? And when I've asked that, 100% of the time, the students have said, I wanna make the call, which I think is fabulous.
It does seem like a great way to fit in that community connection, not only businesses or people in the community that would do job shadow, um, days, but when I'm looking at this list sort of like resume writing and telephone skills and mock interviews, like, there could be, seems like there could be resources in our community. We have so many people that are retired and so many people that, you know, it would be a good way to, to kind of bring that in. So that's, that's great. That's exciting. I got to do Career Day, and I feel like that was so fun, and, um, last year. And so I think, I feel like it's building on sort of all those, all those things. Very exciting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just had a question based on what you, you just mentioned about the cold calling. What's been the reception from the, the businesses or the partnerships you're making to, to those cold calls?
Uh, I'd say so far it's been about 50/50. Uh, some call, thank you for calling, we don't do, we're not doing internships this year. You know, and some is like, oh, that's great, we don't actually do it what you called, but like Addison Gilbert, what they call internships are for people going into that profession, which makes sense in a hospital setting. So they have things called externships. So, you know, just learning some of the terminology has been great, but they're like, yeah, great, we can catch you into this program and, and go. So it's been about half and half.
That seems, that seems really positive to me.
Oh, yeah, 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 great.
That's good. Also, I was just thinking about the transportation issue and, and how far, like, do you talk to kids about, um, taking the train, taking the catibus? And if so, do you, do you have limits on how far, or if, if there's something available in Boston or, or, you know, Chelsea or somewhere like that? Are, are you encouraging kids to take the train to those places, or, or what are your thoughts?
I'd say yes, if they can get an internship in Boston, go for it. If you have the ability to get there, go for it. And, um, and there are all those are, all those opportunities are available to get there, you know, to do the train. And so, yeah, I, I found that students sometimes just have one idea. It's like, oh, I don't have a car, I can't drive to Boston. But just to, you know, give them the time to think about, oh, there are other ways to get there.
Are, are most of them on Cape Town though, or are there some that are outside Cape?
Mostly people are Cape Town-centered, you know, but there have been some who have been talking about, oh, I know this person in the State House. And, yeah, good.
I mean, the key seems to me to be, you know, as you mentioned, that, those authentic partnerships.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, I feel like that's what's gonna make this program successful. And, um, you know, how, I guess, how do you measure, or how do you define those authentic partnerships? Or is that sort of fluid for now, and until you kind of go through the program a little bit and get more feedback from students, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. I appreciate the question a lot. And I think yes and yes, that it's, it is fluid right now, because this is new for me, you know? And so in terms of how to measure, you, you know, the efficacy of a partnership, there'll be, there'll be a learning curve for that, I'm certain. I would love, you know, what I, what, right now, what I'm looking for are partners who are responsive, partners who, um, you know, have all the things that we hope for in education, have that growth mindset, willing to work with students and give them the opportunities. So, uh, yeah, so hopefully, you know, that's how it goes. And then obviously, if we get student feedback saying, okay, I did this internship, but didn't really get to do what I wanted to, or they said that I do, and, um, I could see myself then stepping in. And, you know, if it's still during the internship, I can make that call and say, hey, what can we do to make this better for the student, like that? And, and that's the way you build trust with people anyways, working with them and being honest. So that's what I would hope to do.
It's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so you did this last year, and you're doing it this year?
No, uh, this is the first year, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's.
I did start working on it a little bit in the spring and the summer, but.
And you're doing a shadow day and the internship program?
Yeah.
Seems like more than a, a one-man show. Is it manageable?
I expect quarter four to be, that I'll be very, very, very busy. Especially going to see the sites and coordinating that.
What about, um, if somebody on Cape Town had an inaccessible, you know, internship? And after a Corey, driving the person back and forth, the student back and forth?
Hmm.
I don't know. That's just like one more layer. That's a little iffy with car insurance and the school insurance, but.
I may have to spot, to talk to the district lawyer.
It would come, yeah, it will come up probably.
But yeah, but that, that's another wrinkle that we'd have to consider what to do.
This is awesome. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I just wonder if your work comes with any financial support? Not for you in the form of stipend, but do you have any kind of a budget? If you needed to buy Catabus passes for students, could you do that? If somebody needed something or other, um, how, what does that look like?
Yeah. Um, again, that's above my, my pay grade. I, I asked for, you know, a, a spending account, but, you know, didn't get it.
I, the reason I ask is because I would hate to see a student not be able to reach a really great internship because of some kind of a barrier. And I know that we do everything we can to make sure that nobody misses something because of a financial consideration. I, I, I think not just about the Catabus, but I think about, students want to, um, dress professionally when they go out and do this work. And there are times when that might be a barrier as well. And so I would just encourage you to reach out, um, to PTO or to any other groups we can connect you with, if, or perhaps the Foundation for Rockport Schools, um, for that kind of support, because we would hate to see a student miss out. It sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. I love those suggestions. That's. Thank you. I love those suggestions. That's very good.
I ask a question sort of unrelated to students, but how does this change? I don't know if this is more of a question for Ms. Rose or superintendent or who, but how does this sort of change like our staffing pattern? So if you have seniors who the whole last quarter of high school, like what if you teach senior English? And there's only one person in your English. So how are we still kind of working on how all that works out or?
Uh, yeah, so in part of it will be dependent upon how many students actually end up in an, in an internship and how those numbers work out. I believe there's a redeployment plan that's very loose at this point in time, but that people will still be teaching full time, so to speak, but they could be redeployed into a grade level, different class, co-teaching opportunities.
And also, we don't have any teachers now who are all fully senior teachers, so it would be one class, one class, one class. So thinking about how many students we have left and how we can redeploy those teachers to be doing things with the students who are not out in internships. Some of them are teaching AP classes, so it's really just a few teachers who, you know, will have a quarter where they may not necessarily be teaching the same class, but they may be teaching a different class, or they may be assisting. You know, Eric was one of the internship pieces if we have that many kids doing it.
Not to put you on the spot, I was just curious.
All good? Great. Thank you very much.
So we've gone back through the agendas for school committee, five years back, and I don't think we've done a presentation on AP. Did we do a small one? I couldn't, I couldn't find it.
We did, but it was abbreviated because post COVID, the numbers were off and the amount of AP exams that students were taking were off. So we had done them years prior to 2020 and then we had abbreviated versions through 2022.
And Ms. Rose and I are tag teaming because with her background guidance and high school principal, she has way more knowledge about the AP scores. This is my first year delving into the AP area. So we've kind of tagged team on reviewing the data and figuring out what it was that you guys might like to see. So just a little bit of overview of AP in case anybody doesn't know that much about it and what the exams are designed to measure and how they benefit students. And, and this is something that Ms. Rose and Dr. Brinker and I talked about a lot. There's such a huge focus on scores of three or higher and what they mean for a student because most colleges require that three to do anything in terms of skipping a placement or giving college credit. But the little sidebar on students who earn a score of a one or two across their AP exams have better college outcomes than academically similar students. So I think this is something that publicly we need to make more known, but it's something that we need to have conversations with in terms of our curriculum coordinators and our AP teachers that the one and two, even though you're looking for the three, the one and two is still giving them more experience and exposure to that kind of curriculum and that kind of rigor and courses to prepare them for college. This was a big piece of something that Ms. Rose was interested in, so I don't know if you.
Well, I think for those of you who have been on the committee for a few years and heard these presentations, we, we had shifted, I think it was back in 2019, but I, I could be mistaken, 2018, to requiring students to take the AP classes, to take the AP exams. And there's controversy about that. All schools do them differently. People have different mindsets around it. But when we made that shift, it was because more and more students were taking the AP classes for AP credit and saying, I really don't want to do the exam. I don't care about it. Less colleges are really taking them for credit. I'm not going to skip that class, even if I get the credit. Sort of what's the point? There were some drawbacks with that, especially at that time. One, we really didn't get the data that we needed for our teachers to really be able to see, you know, what was working in their curriculum, how they could do better, really taking those tests and seeing how students were doing on them and giving the students that experience of that high stakes exam. And even if they're just sitting through it and taking it, the benefits that, you know, can come from that. Because there was a time in Nicole, I'm looking at you because I think you were on the school committee then, when we only, you know, we'd have twenty five kids in a class and two taking an exam. And it's like, well, we don't really have any, any data to measure if what we're doing is successful and if they're actually getting that AP curriculum in those classes. Because a lot of times the teachers, knowing they weren't going to take the exams, could slow down the pace and not cover all the content and really maybe perhaps not doing the class to fidelity as it's prescribed by the college board. So it's just, it's something to note when you're looking at the scores that, you know, our scores are, we don't have a criteria for getting into AP classes. We do make rec teacher recommendations, but parents can override, students can override. So it's not like some schools who have placement exams to be able to be in those classes. So really anyone can take them. And we do encourage the majority of kids to take the exam. So the scores are reflective of that. And I think it's just important to note when we're looking through the scores.
And before we switch, I just think we've had a lot of conversations and this slide was a really validating slide for those of us who believe in setting the bar higher for human beings than lower for human beings. And so that bracket on the side, even as a parent of someone who waved a kid into an AP as a dad, I will tell you that that particular child had not ever viewed himself as an academic. And that experience in that class allowed him to peak in a way. Maybe he didn't peak academically like some of his traditional AP peers, but he peaked academically compared to himself and started to see himself as an, as an academic for the first time in his life. And then reports back that, you know, when he got to college, he felt like he settled into college as an academic in a way that he hadn't in the past. And so there's a lot of qualitative data to some of this conversation too. So when we talk about access for all and equity, I, I do think it's important that Rockport continues to believe in setting the bar high for students and asking students to achieve.
And, and we really made a value judgment, I think, as a school committee and a administrative team at the time, that we cared more about giving students the experience, knowing that it may compromise what we look like on paper. So if, you know, if we're getting looked at, you know, people are scrolling through our AP data online, deciding if they want to go to Rockport High School or another high school, we understand some of the other high schools may have higher averages in certain scores because they have a higher bar for who can get in there academically. And we felt it was more important to give more students access and opportunity and have genuine, authentic data for our teachers to review and learn from than caring about necessarily meeting that standard on paper. So it was, you know, purposeful judgment that was made at that time.
And this is overall Massachusetts participation and performance on the AP exam. A just under sixty three thousand students took AP exams in 2024 in Massachusetts. This is straight from Ms. Rose's course catalog of the offerings, which do change here and there. And then through VHS learning, students can have access to AB courses that aren't offered in the school.
This year, for the first time, not in here, and we don't have scores for it yet because it's the first, first year, but we are offering AP chemistry for the first time this year as well. This is just, this is just a reminder of how we do our table. We did update our GPA table two years ago, I think, to be more reflective of the fact that students in AP and honors classes can get well above a four point O. That was brought up because that's the way most other schools do it. So we wanted to again, be competitive with, you know, if students from Hamilton, Manchester, Essex, other schools are applying and their GPAs look to be five point three and our kids look to be four point three, why is that? Now, having said that, from a college and career background, we know that most colleges are recalculating all these GPAs anyway and putting people on a level playing field. But we just thought it was important to remind people that AP is weighted higher than honors and higher than CP. So even if, you know, if they have an A or a B in an AP class and they have a one on the exam, that one doesn't necessarily cheat, does not change anything about their grade or their GPA. It's just another, you know, benchmark measure of their progress and gives them another experience related to AP.
And this is the data showing the five year summary of what has happened with our students. The total number of students who took exams, of course, students can take more than one exam in the year. So that's why there are more exams than students. And you can see the percentage of our students who scored three or higher compared to the green line, which is the Massachusetts. So seeing a good trend of us in this past year coming up to meet what the state's outcomes for performance were as well. And now this is, we're going into the data from the exams that were actually taken in 2024 only. So these are the visual arts exams and you have your scores that you get a mean score and what percentage of the students scored three or higher. And the graphs to the right compare what the student outcomes were in 2023 versus what they were in 2024. So from orange to the bluish color, I think. And I, I returned this into percentages because again, the cohorts can be so small that if we gave you numbers, it could be identifying as to who these students are and what the data is. And since no one took the computer science principles, there's no graph for this one. And English literature, down here, they were really thrilled with eighty two percent of the students scoring three or more. Even though the data is showing there were no fives this year, they do have, you know, more threes to even out where the kids were lower in the past. And then European history and US history, the APUSH class, I think that's a real highlight to see what's happened with those scores from last year to this year. Even though we're trying to still celebrate the ones and the twos, that APUSH class, you can see that everybody's moved up from twos to fours. So even though there are no fives, that's a real significant improvement. This is calculus and statistics. A little bit more spread out here with the calculus being a little bit lower and the department is working on analyzing these outcomes in, in a more in-depth manner. And then science, biology, physics one and physics two, like Mrs. Rose said, there was no, no one took chemistry last year. That'll be this year. We'll have some outcomes from that. But that's where the scores have gone with, you know, biology, a hundred percent of the students, three or higher. And physics one being our lowest, which while this is AP physics one, you know, this is, this, you can relate this back to our MCAS outcomes for physics. That's an area that is, you know, newer in terms of switching around the curriculum and what's being covered. So that's something that the science department is working on. They were looking at this yesterday when Dr. Brinko and I had come into their department meeting.
I will just add too, AP physics one has changed their curriculum several times. And Aiden and I have had some conversations about how they've ebbed and flowed and changed and added it to be almost, it's not impossible, but it is very tricky to fit the curriculum into the year, even as opposed to AP physics two, which you would think sounds like that's the next level of rigor. And so he has actually been in contact with the college board. People, you know, in his profession, other physics teachers across the state to really see how, how that test is assessing what he's been teaching. And if we want to continue to do AP physics one or if we're better served to do AP physics two and chemistry, because the test is really not teaching what he thinks even, you know, our most science focused students who are going on to college may need, you know, when they leave us. So again, there's been a lot of thoughtful, great discussion that's come out of this data, which is physics is, is one of the reasons we had pushed to have everyone take it because it was one of those areas where we had so little data on it before. It was really hard to gauge, you know, how we could change our instruction.
And so overall, we were both pleased with the results of this in general, for every area that we were looking at, we had some really good scores and some really good gains. This is just a little, you know, caveat as to we got the bronze award for our outcomes this year. Just the two things that I feel are more important were the areas that we got the gold in. So the college culture being all the students who have taken at least one AP and sixty seven percent of their students have done that. The percent who have scored a three or higher and at least one exam, forty two percent have done that. The last one is something that's a little more in discussion in the building through teachers and coordinators. The percentage of students who took five or more, including one in ninth or 10th grade. So we haven't had a ninth grader take an AP exam for obvious reasons. And I did go back and look up some data and we have had 10th graders take that exam and do fairly well for the most part. So two, one or two students per year have taken an AP exam in 10th grade. So that one, I'm not sure if we'll hit a gold in that. Not that we discourage students, if anybody would like to take that, mostly they've taken statistics and APUSH in, as a 10th grader.
I do think to focus on those two goals, based on the conversation we just had about setting the bar and setting kids up for success. I'm really proud of that. And so I want the community to understand what that goal and what those numbers mean. That's a, that means we're creating a culture by allowing more kids access. That when we talk about being college prepared, it's not just about getting all As in high school. It's not just about taking the highest level classes. It's about having a mindset that you are an academic and that you're ready to get away from your family and go to the next level of academia and study. Many of us were terrible students at younger ages. Some people were fantastic students their whole life. But we need to set the bar in a manner that we can keep pushing kids towards growth and achievement and resiliency. And those two goals make me really proud of what we're doing. I, I'm, I'm really happy to see that that college culture and college credit piece is important. And that even if we send kids off to college who have received lots of twos, that they might be more prepared than the kid coming from another school that wasn't even allowed to take a course at that level and just sat in a CP course. So I don't want that to be lost on people.
I feel like I'm channeling Amy Oaks because she always brings up this point, but that for better or for worse, Rockport can also swing with a cohort. I mean, I happen to know that one of these, I will not say which one, was four kids that took the, that were in the class. So it, I, I do feel like I, I appreciate all this and, and the graphs. And I think it's looking year to year is, is great. But then also keeping in mind that some of these are such small cohorts that the swings can be dramatic and.
Yeah, the course, the course enrollment went from one student in a course up to thirty in one of the courses. So we did have a twenty two, a thirty, an eighteen, a fifteen and a nineteen. So we did have some bigger cohorts as well.
And I would just say, I know, I think I say this every time we present a data point like this. We are such a holistic group when it comes to looking at data, which I really appreciate. I mean, I think not one piece of data should be reflective of who we are as a school. It's, it's really a combination of all of those things. But I do think having data and having information, especially as an administrator and trying to lead teachers and lead students and understand things, it's just helpful to be able to look at it. It's been some of the most valuable, you know, conversations that Jody and I have been able to have with teachers too, is when you can look at the bar and have them have that aha moment of like, oh, I worked so hard to get to this and most of my kids got this, even if like the overall score is whatever it is. There are so many pockets of good data within those scores that we found really useful and affirming for teachers. Or on the reverse side, like, wow, I really thought we had hit that and I don't know why students didn't get it. What could I do better? And that's really what we're trying to, to do with all the data that we're reviewing this year is see it as a learning tool so that teachers can be motivated to keep, keep going and keep trying and students can feel like we're, we're hearing and listening to what they need.
You're not done.
That's okay. I'll wait. You don't have to.
Will you go back one slide? I think about communication and advocacy on behalf of our school system. And I think there are so many good stories for us to share with the community that may not realize that forty four out of sixty six of our graduating students took an advanced placement class. And that we have an open door to advanced placement. There are really powerful messages about the culture of our schools and our school community that come out just through this one single topic. And I think it's so important for us to share. If I were an elementary school parent, I'd be very interested to have heard this particular presentation tonight. And when I hear you talk about what it's like to be a student. And when I hear you talk about what it's like to be a student who maybe isn't the very strongest student in the class, but who walks into college and says, I'm so glad I did that. I feel so much better wherever you go, or, or whether you go to work or go into the military. So I think this is a really powerful story and I urge us to share it.
That's interesting, timely, because right before he stepped into your policy meeting, Dr. Branco and I were just talking about, okay, we've had this information for a couple months and how do we share this? How do we get that out there? In addition to a few more really cool things that are going on right now and another grant that we've received and how do we publicize that information and make sure that people know? So we were just having that conversation. Something that we have always, and you guys who've been here for a while know this, have analyzed MCAS data or outcomes from Galileo data for years, but the departments always did it in their own individual way. So something that Dr. Branco did bring in with that MCAS is a consistent systematic analysis protocol for MCAS. So what we did this year was we came up with an analysis protocol for AP scores, which we provided every AP teacher with, and they were able to analyze this data and come up with some highlights and some action steps. So I'll just, I'll let you just look at this because this came straight from department time, from the analysis, analyses that those departments completed. With the highlights of, like I said before, the APUSH class, no students scoring a one or two, and the 82% of the ELA students, you know, getting a three or a four on that exam. And despite some lower scores in the math area, especially in the calculus, they saw a lot of improvement from students going from a two to a three and looked at some analysis of the student growth in that area. And then post that, things that, what I just spoke about, which I forgot was on this next slide, was the data analysis protocol and the teachers have done it at a teacher level, departments have done it at a department level. And we will continue that conversation when we move into our curriculum coordinators meeting to make sure that six, 12 has an opportunity to look at this data and discuss what the participation and performance means. And we have been working on, and you saw this right from our SDI in the summer, that one of our goals is having six through 12 work on claim evidence reasoning work to develop their critical thinking skills. And that is something we are doing. And just yesterday, the departments had their first day working on this in departmental time. They had nine, 12 time, six, eight time, and then combined time. And they'll be doing that again in March. And some high school focus areas, this coming straight out of what the teachers want to discuss at our coordinators level is really reviewing what the prereqs are to get into AP and how we can use some more UDL strategies to increase student engagement and inclusive practices for those kids in that course, because it is, you know, for lack of a better term, a canned curriculum that comes out and they're figuring out ways to really engage the students in that kind of drier, maybe content area.
I think one of the cool things we saw yesterday, Jody and I know Amy walked around too, we all walked around and visited different PD sessions. And when we talked about claim evidence reasoning, I wanted to see how each content area was interpreting that and using it. And my aha moment for the day was when I hung out with the math department and quite honestly, walking in the math room usually scares me personally, but it didn't in that moment. Because they had a really powerful conversation about students showing their work and the importance of, you know, if you're an architect, you can't just build a bridge and go, well, I got it right. You need to be able to demonstrate your abilities before someone lets you build the bridge. And so they were talking about how their version of claims, evidence and reasoning was getting students to understand the importance of showing their work narratively on the page and not just picking from a multiple choice or throwing some numbers down. And so I, it was neat to go from department to department and see how everybody had a spin on what CER means and how it's going to impact kids.
It's, it's not just, I just looked, they're the only ones here, but it's not just because, he didn't say that because you're here. When, when we left the math department meeting yesterday, he really talked about what you guys were talking about in that department time.
And just props to, I think, all the teachers six through 12 in those meetings yesterday. It was really inspiring to go in and see like there were a lot of aha moments where, you know, sixth grade teachers are really starting to see and hear what their students, what they're doing now and how that's going to impact them by the time that they're, you know, sophomores, juniors, seniors. And we've, we've been trying to do that more and more over the years, but this really is, I think, the first year that, you know, through curriculum meetings and then now through time, the teachers are really starting, and hopefully we'll have more of, those are aha moments of like, wow. And we are using common language and the things that we're doing in sixth grade are actually going to prepare not only for seventh grade and eighth grade, but for the higher levels. And I walked into the English meeting yesterday and they were just six through 12 in there sharing like how they're doing this and what they're doing that and highlighting and, oh my gosh, this is what it looks like in sixth grade, but this is what it looks like in, in my, my 12th grade AP Lit. And the, the middle school teachers were like, oh my God, I can't believe the level of writing that these kids are capable of by then, because they're already doing pretty cool, more than we think they can do in sixth and seventh grade. But I don't know that they ever get to see those work samples of what, what they're expected to do by the time they get to the higher grades. So I think that's going to make a huge difference, even in scores, you know, we start early and we know what's expected and we're consistent and we have, you know, shared language and expectations and hopefully we'll see, you know, that rise across the board for everyone.
And when Dr. Branco and I went in after Mrs. Rose was in the English department, it was still six, 12. They had gone 30 to 40 minutes beyond their time together. They actually, they were, they were concerned and felt guilty because we walked into them having such a good time. It seemed like they weren't really working, but they were enjoying their time together, sharing what their experiences were with the students. It was really, really funny to walk in laughing. They're like, no, we're really working.
I just want to say, I think it's great. I think being new on the committee, I don't know as much about what the schools are doing. I'm still learning a lot, especially at the high school level. And to hear this, I think it's really important and I'm going to encourage a lot of other elementary parents to watch the recording of this because this is really great stuff you guys are doing. Thank you.
So Ms. Lester, it's hard to go last in the order of presentation, so thank you for just hanging out. Let me find your stuff. And as you all know, Anne Marie's been on the job since second, third week of August-ish. So learning curve has been steep and she's going 100 miles an hour all the time. So this is her opportunity just to slow down, believe it or not, publicly. And let us all know what's going on in student services. So go ahead, just tell me when to switch and I'll do it.
So at the beginning of the year this year, I had to really sort of take a broad look at sort of what we're doing, what we're doing well, where we fall down and pick some areas that I felt we could make vast improvement in, in a year's time and really see outcomes. So Desi rolled out a new IEP, so we are rolling with that and implementing, I know some of you love this word, fidelity. We're also conducting a comprehensive program review. The last time that we did that was in 2017. Desi recommends that you do at least EPs annually, so we're catching up in that area. We're also working really hard to reinvigorate CPAC. And our goal is to develop an intensive learning program for some of our students K to five.
CPAC.
Thank you. Student, it's Special Ed Advisory Council, basic and parent, yeah. Sorry. I know, I forget that people don't know the lingo, so just wave, yell. Yes, so we started last year learning about the new IEP. It is more student centered, which is nice, I think, for parents because they really feel like their students have a voice for the first time. Even at a very young age, they're encouraged to talk about what they want to learn, what their goals are. The language is also updated for, to be accessible to students and families. It looks different. It's, but the content is not that different, but it is a different format and there are different expectations that we're trying to get used to. It does reflect requirements so that we ensure that we're not putting kids in what we would consider a least restrictive environment, really taking into consideration what inclusion means. And where, as a department, we have to take a strong look at that across the board. And I'll talk more about that when we get into our program review piece. The new IEP also strengths, seeks to strengthen transition planning to better prepare our kids for life after high school, for whatever that means. And Eric's program that he's working on will benefit our kids, as will the career ed piece and all of that. But there is a, an additional push to really focus on transition. Before it was just getting a piece of paperwork done, I feel like it was just a compliance. Now it's really, and you, there's some intent and some real thought into what you have to complete.
Was the 2.0 software actually ready?
Yes. We, yes, we use eSped and it was ready. It was available to staff middle of August. So I think not only did staff need to become oriented with the new expectations of the IEP, but they also had to learn this program and all of the new features of that. So that's been, Tasha's here, but that's been, taken some time and some effort, I think. Any questions about the IEP rollout before I go on? Okay. So program review, I did a lot of cleaning out of files and the last one I could find was 2017. So when I say that, it could have happened, but I'm just, I couldn't locate it. So I figured in a, in a time where we're really looking at right sizing and we're really looking at programs, K to 12, this was a good opportunity to have someone else come in, look at what we're doing, how we're doing it and give us some feedback, not just have our team look at what we're doing. So a special, the focus really will be on enrollment trends, specialized programs that are available across K to 12, really comprehensive programs that, that we, we're seeing all the way through, that they don't just sort of drop at a certain point. And staff support models, how can we better use the staff that we have and really looking at strengths and certifications. So with the DLT team, so the district leadership team, we talked about sort of the concerns and we came up with three questions to frame the scope of what we're doing. Three questions are, what are the recent trends in special ed enrollment and how can this data be leveraged to anticipate future needs and inform long-term planning? As we've talked about in different aspects tonight, our cohorts are often very small and our capacity to meet those students' needs are often, they could have, we can do that for one year, but then we lose the cohort or we build a program and those students move on and we're faced with, do we move that program along? Do we switch gears? What do we do? So we're trying to anticipate what those needs will be and be smart about sort of what we put in place. What type of specialized programs are available to our unique student populations within the district? What do we need? What can we do better? That's a major focus. And are special ed student support models effective, efficient in meeting the broad range of our students' needs? So again, really looking at staff and their strengths and what can we do different? The timeline, we received an email today ironically. They initially spent some time reviewing records, so they asked us today to provide 26 random records of students K to 12, two from each grade. They want us to pull IEPs and evaluations. So they're going to spend some time looking at that. They're going to do two onsite observations, the second week in January, I think it's the 13th and the 17th, one at RHHS, one RES and one at RMHS. And they'll spend the whole day doing interviews, observing staff and programs and that kind of thing. There'll be staff focused groups, so they'll ask me to pull certain staff together, they'll interview them and they'll also send out some surveys. And then they'll do some analysis of everything that they have and provide us with a culminating report. We asked if they could get us that report sooner than March 20, you know, in the, because it's kind of sort of after the budget process, but she said she would do the best she can. So we went with, after doing some research with local special ed directors, there was a lot of conversation about who they use, who do you go to? And if you want to do a full program eval, they recommended to go with Anne Donovan from one of the case collaborative and she's going to do the comprehensive thing. So they've worked with PBD in some other local schools. And then all they got, she was highly recommended after doing some, some work. So after my conversation with her, I'm excited to see what we get from that.
And it's nice to get the vantage point from a different collaborative too. Somebody who wouldn't affiliate with some of this.
Yeah, we considered going with someone from the consortium, but I think, I guess we're a little close that way. So having somebody from the outside really look at what we're doing, what we're not doing and give us some feedback would be helpful. Any questions on program review? I go fast, so sorry.
Yeah, sure. You mentioned K to 12, does the program review include the pre-K as well or?
She, we're, she's asking for IEPs K to 12. She did, we're not looking at preschool right now. The plan moving forward is to take the results from this and then create a schedule, a rotating schedule to look at different programs. So for example, next gym could be preschool, it could be social emotional programming, it could be language-based learning programs, it could be comprehensive programs K to 12. We're able to then pinpoint sort of some of their recommendations and then dig deeper into those the following year.
Not to call it the preschool.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I can feel Tasha right here. So CPAC is something that obviously is really new to me, so we're going slow, but we're getting things done, which is exciting. We've been advertising on the website, we've updated our website, sort of, it was under like parent advisory council, nobody knows what that is. So we sort of helped pinpoint that, refocus that. Our meeting notes will be on the website, our agendas, all of that, so that people can get information. We've published information in our smores, we've sent blackboard messages home. One of the other things that we did that is an excellent resource for us is we joined MasPAC. The Federation for Students with Special Needs has a component called MasPAC. You can email them and she, her name ironically is Leslie Leslie, but she's so helpful. She'll give you feedback. We, tonight we had our first workshop that was on basic rights and special needs, the IEP. She was going, when I left to come here, she was going through the new IEP, working on explaining to parents sort of what that looked like and answering any of their questions. Our first meeting, we had 14 parents. We asked if anybody was interested in leadership positions because the suggestion was to not just ask if people want to co-chair. Don't look for one person to lead and have a vice president because people shy away from that. So we do have two people who are interested in co-chairing and we, our January meeting will focus on establishing bylaws and getting those people informed on sort of the process and what to do. I think the real interesting takeaway from our first meeting was really about parent concerns regarding inclusion and inclusive opportunities in our district. We use the word inclusion. We don't really know what that means. I, we know what it means, but we don't know what it looks like here and that's something we really need to look at. And we need to be cognizant of providing opportunities for all of our students, whether it means an after-school activity, whether it means a sporting event, whether it's chess club that's super guided, opposed to just a normal chess club. A lot of the feedback was that any opportunities for special needs? A lot of the feedback was that any opportunities for special needs students are far away. You have to travel to participate in those types of things. So reaching out to specific organizations and see if we can pull things here. Even if it's a one sort of event, you know, we, we talked about a book night. Not with, and it seems exclusive, I know that. But a lot of our students have sensory issues, so you can't include them in sort of some of the bigger things that we do. But looking at ways that we can include them in those things. Like if you had, this is just an example, but if you had a Polar Express night, they can't necessarily be in the cafeteria with all the chaos. So you have a special meeting place for them. You have a certain room for them to read that book with a certain amount of people. They can mingle if they're able and they're having, you know, enjoying what they're doing. But if it causes stress and, you know, we have this more thoughtful sort of environment for them. That was really important to parents and so that is one of the goals and something that we're really taking seriously and, and talking about. One of the things we also did was call, connect with Gloucester CPAC. And, you know, we were making connections when they were on strike. So we didn't really get that far. So we've reconnected this week and we're hoping that we can share opportunities. So maybe not work together all the time, but if they have a workshop makes, you know, reach out to us and invite our parents and vice versa, that kind of thing. So really building our community in that way. Any questions about that?
Do the parents that, do the families that have out of district students get blackboard messages? Okay, I can't remember.
So the big goal, like those aren't lofty enough. It was very apparent early on that, and I want to make it clear that my, all of my high, my experience has been middle high school. So I am an elementary, you know, I'm learning as we go. But one of the things that is very apparent and glaring is that we have a cohort of students K to five with what we would consider severe special needs. So most of our students are moderate special needs, but this is, this is, I hate to say the label, but they're more severe, they have bigger needs. Most of those kids are either on the autism spectrum or they have intellectual disabilities that result in inability to communicate or sometimes with some challenging behaviors because they can't communicate and they just struggle. And so we've really looked at. We have currently a significant number of one-on-ones in the K to two grade levels. And so we talked a lot about what that means, why we have it. Is it makes sense that we have it? Is it the most effective thing to do? Is it restrictive? Is it exactly what the kids need? And the answers are, are from here to here, right? It's based on their needs, but it just sounds like a lot on paper. So it was a red flag to sort of pay some attention to this. So what we're hoping to do is create a cohort, which is probably three to five students, K to two, and then we'll look at three to five. We have to watch the age span there, so we'll, we'll really look at what we have. But the goal is to create a structured classroom based on ABA principles, which is the applied behavioral science, focus on incidental and discreet trial teaching, intensive individualized instruction, one-on-one and small group, an emphasis on growth and development and communication, functional skills and academic achievement. This year, we've noticed that we're often addressing behaviors and the behavior is a result of being frustrated or an inability to be able to access. And so students aren't having the opportunity to focus on their communication skills, their functional skills, their academic skills, because all we're doing is focusing on the behavior. So we need to take a step back and create an environment where they're not failing those things, where they can learn at their level, at their pace. We'll continue to obviously have services in OTPT, speech counseling, behavioral therapy. The goal is really to create a program that does a little bit of everything. So if you, if a student, all students should be participating in morning meeting in a classroom. They should, they'll go to lunch with their peers. They'll do gym, health, art, music, all of those things if they're capable. And they'll also push in and pull out during the day. So if a child has a strength in math and they're capable of being in math class, they'll go to their assigned classroom for math, but they'll get pulled out for reading and writing. Or the opposite, if they're really learning their sight words and they're doing a really good job, they feel confident and it's something where their behavior does not escalate or, because of their, then they'll be able to participate in that in the classroom. So it'll really be individualized. Like I said, I think the goal is three to five students. One teacher who is severe, this is a unicorn, I keep calling it, but somebody who has ABA training, who has RBT training, who has a severe special needs license, who's done this before, right? They were not, you know, working with me to develop something, but somebody who's already done it. And then also have paraprofessionals support that teacher in conjunction with our BCBA. We've also talked about our BCBA, who's a, so it's a behavioral specialist, that's the short lingo, works K to 12. And this year, the focus has really been on elementary. And if the needs require us to consult with an outside, you know, BCBA to sort of help us get this program rolling, then we're committed to sort of looking at what that looks like. We've been in touch with other neighboring districts since things have quieted down to do site visits for people who have programs where we think they're very effective and that where they're doing a good job. We're also planning on going to visit one of our consortium classrooms at, with, at KOG, Kevin, at the, their elementary level school. So all of those things are happening. But for me, this is, this is the biggest focus. And then once we sort of, you know, Mark, I get a little excited sometimes and Mark's like, slow your roll, slow your roll. He's like, one thing at a time. I know that we feel like we're kind of building the plane as we're sort of in flight, right? But this is one of those scenarios where the need is so apparent. And if we do not change the way that we do things, just to give you an example. So if we have five students currently have one-on-ones in our K to two group, if we send them out of district, the lowest tuition is approximately $116,000. The highest tuition is 168. Then you add transportation, so then you multiply that by five. So what we're trying to do is not just save money, but do what's best for kids in their own community. That's really the goal. So I'm excited about this one. The other things are, are hard in a different way, but this is actually exciting. And this week, we also signed a contract with a company called ACE. It's a computer program company that focuses on behavior analysis. They, they're modeled after ABA principles where teachers can go in, put students' goals. It helps you create curriculum. It helps you analyze behavior. It kicks out graphs, gives you suggestions for accommodations, modifications, that kind of thing. So we're trialing that for 30 days. Our BCBA is very excited. We've targeted five teachers pre-K to two who we're going to allow to use for these 30 days to get some feedback. But I think that is just one component of what would make this a really successful program. Questions?
Do you, oh, go ahead, Jess. So do you anticipate that this program, like a program for kids with higher support needs, would move with those kids? Or do you anticipate?
So that's, I guess that's, and that's.
Coming.
Exactly. So that's the conversation. You know, we've, we've talked to preschool teachers and they assure me that they can, we can, we can maintain that cohort for a bit. But that's the real, one of the real challenges in Rockport is that you don't always, we don't have the capacity to keep doing that. And last year, I think, if you remember, there was a lot of conversation about us partnering with North Shore, with the consortium and having them come onsite. And they basically have their programs in our facility. I didn't, I don't love that idea only because we have to have the ability to morph based on needs. So if you have that staff that I talked about earlier, if the, if the cohort need changes from K to two, from three to five, you can move with them. When these students start entering middle school, if the goal is to keep them in their community, we can morph again. If, if you bring in somebody else to create a program or develop a program or have us house a program, we have no control of that. I think that this is our opportunity to create something meaningful and adapt and with, with the needs. And I, I think this is not unique Rockport problem. This is a, a challenging problem, sort of North Shore-wide, but especially in small schools, because if you only have a cohort of one, you can't create a program just for a one-off. But we don't have, it's more than one, you know, it's, it's pretty significant. And so, you know, we're really excited.
And before you jump to the next slide, I think just to connect some of the presentations we've heard tonight, you know, we talked about AP and we talked about high achieving academics. We need all means all. And so when we're talking about meeting the needs of a wide, wide spectrum of students, nothing would make me prouder to know that we're meeting the needs of those kids in the way we just explained it. And then we have another group of kids whose needs we can meet right here in their hometown, in their school district for as long as possible. We know that there are, there are anomalies and there are often times when that cannot be done. But I think a program like this, and if it has some adaptability to it, it will allow us to really meet our mission, which is to try to educate all of the students in Rockport, in Rockport. And I think it's a noble mission. I think it's well worth the time and the effort. And so I, I applaud Emery for biting this off so quickly and early on in her tenure. But it is, it's going to be a heavy lift and, and the unicorn is not necessarily overreach. It's gonna, you, you need the right staff to do this kind of work. And so we're, we're putting feelers out as quickly as possible.
I had a question also, so this might be for Dr. Branco too, but if we, or if and when this program comes into existence, is there a possibility of students that are currently out of district to come back to district? Because we now have the program for them?
Yes and no. I think we can, we should definitely have an out-of-district conversation, I think. And I would love to take the opportunity to sort of highlight the profile of students that are out, why they're out. We do have a very small group, K to five, severe autism. Some of them could come back if we do all of the right things. But I think the goal right now is to prevent people from leaving our community. And then if we do a really good job, hopefully lure those other families back, right? I, I, I don't think it's going to happen overnight, but that would be great. Yeah, yeah.
And then sorry, one other question was just, you had mentioned like the kids attending like a morning meeting or if they maybe excelled in math, going into the classroom. Would, would they be assigned one of the teachers in their prospective grades, but be placed into this program?
Yeah, so in order to be a true part of our Rockport community, they would be assigned a classroom, kind of like they already are. But a lot of their instruction, it, it, a lot of their instruction would be out of that classroom just to meet their needs. I think. It's going to be, it has to be a combination of both. But yes, we want them to feel like part of their community. We don't want them to feel isolated and wonder why I'm in a room with just the same kids all, all day.
And every stu, and each student is going to spend more time or less time.
Right.
And differentiated across the school day.
Yeah, I think the goal is part, what we would consider partial inclusion. Minutes wise, it may look a little different, but that's the goal, is to do a little bit of both.
I just think this is super important and needed and I, I appreciate the work going into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward, some of the things that we've also identified as future endeavors, this is where Mark tells me to, is looking at a language-based learning program, six through 12, looking at a behavioral program, six through eight or six through 12. When we look at our out-of-district caseload, we, we currently do not have the need for a language-based learning program. So you probably wonder why that's up there. Well, it's because we have so many landmark trained staff that there are students that struggle with language-based instruction. And if we could sort of look at how we do things a little bit differently and really use their unique strengths, that would be a benefit for all of our students. And if we look at the cohort of students who are out of district, six through eight, six through 10, a lot of them are social, emotional and behavioral. And that's just, that's just another avenue to sort of dig into and really look at, are there things that we can do to change that? Is there the possibility of creating a program here at home, as we call it? Or is that unrealistic at all? So we really just have to, I'm hoping that the program review gives us some feedback in that area and either persuades me or dissuades me tackling something else either way. Any questions?
What a way to jump into an interim position.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job, wow.
Thanks. I think, I just, I love to say that my, all of my experiences here in Rockport, starting as a paraprofessional, a special ed teacher, dean of students, team chair, have all sort of, I said to Amy Rose today, I think all of those experiences are helping me sort of see things in a different way. Sometimes you work in a silo and sometimes you only focus on one thing, but all of a sudden I have the responsibility of looking at the big picture. And as frightening as that can be sometimes, it's also really exciting because I, I see that we can make movement and we can make improvements. So I'm excited about that. So I appreciate the opportunity.
I want to say something before you all go. This has been a great meeting because if you think about it, we've talked about seniors who have internships. We talked about juniors who have job shadows. We've talked about students who take AP classes. We've talked about students with disabilities. And we heard Henry talk about students' ideas for the library. And I really, really, really appreciate the time that people spend to do the presentations, to come in and talk to us. It must take a long time, I think, even if it's 10 slides. I know a lot of time goes into it and I appreciate your bringing people together because I am still new and this gives me a really powerful picture of what's happening. And I, it, it's late. I appreciate that you're all going to get out of bed at the crack of dawn and do it again tomorrow morning. So I really appreciate the time you take to come and help us understand what's happening. So thank you to all of you.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate the same thing you were saying there with, with all these connections between this, you know, the, the learning program and as you mentioned, the AP courses and the Capstone program and how you began, we began today, you mentioned on the, the communication subcommittee, the aha moment with the parents, you know, at the elementary school, thinking about their students going all the way up through high school. And that's exactly what we did tonight. And to, it's really impressive to hear all this. And if, I think if we're impressed by it, that, that message has to go out to the community. And it ties into everything we've been talking about. So it's really, it's really nice to see, but I think it's really, really important that we, that we communicate all of what we've heard tonight.
So we are going to spend a few minutes talking about budget planning.
Here we go.
Here we go. So just a quick reminder for the community members who haven't seen the slide that this is our timeline and we're. And we're shooting for February fifth for our public presentation and a, and a budget vote and driving all the way to April.
Is that a beer?
All the way to April, all the way to April fifth. Quick little reminder, these are coming from the draft budget book. I will not read, but just a nice video that made me smile from last year at graduation. And just a quick reminder for what the school budget really represents, you know, and it does represent our students, and that's that one constituent group that cannot really advocate for themselves. Despite the fact that Henry does a great job, he can't advocate individually for everybody. So, you know, we're very cognizant of the fact that we're doing this work for our kids and for the sustainability of our school district. So just to make sure we're driving that home. We are once again engaging in the zero-based budgeting process, which is different than some other budgeting processes that are used. But that really focuses on not connecting to prior year spending. They're tied to specific activities and levels of services. Spending increases or reductions are not simply spread evenly across budgets. That's a really important piece to stop on publicly. All organizations, but I'll stay in my wheelhouse of K-12 public schools. There was an old-school, traditional method of we have to cut X amount of money. So some, this, a third comes from elementary, a third comes from middle, a third comes from high school and call it a day. And that's really, lacks a lot of thoughtfulness, in my opinion, as a leader, when it comes down to really allocating. So we are spending hard, hard amounts of time right now. We have another meeting tomorrow morning for two hours with the leadership team to continue this work and to have conversations about where we want to take the district and how we're gonna get there. And not simply to allocate or, or reduce based on percentages. And ultimately that the funding and the budget is built targeted towards the activities that align with our strategy. And so you can see all of these things come together tonight. My hope is by the end of the year, we've woven a tapestry of presentation after presentation after presentation that just connects all of the dots for you and the community and says, oh, this is actually the SDI, this is the evidence. And so if we do our jobs well and, and if the educators are all continuing in the direction we're all going together, then we're gonna be in good shape for that. Just a quick understanding again for the public that, you know, we have multiple components of the school budget. The, the major component is the operating budget. That's what we're building right now. That's what you will be helping to support and vote on. And then we also have the capital improvement budget, which we already went through two or three meetings ago, when we talked about allocating specific needs. And then this will just help, uh, community members, this will be in the budget book again this year, understand overall the operating budget, that the town's contribution is around seventy-five percent. Then we have the school reserve, which is made up of circuit breakers, special ed, transportation and school choice. And, you know, roughly speaking, that's around twenty-five percent. We also have user fees built into some of our operations. They're used specifically to subsidize the activities in which they're, they're, they're collected for. And then our grants from federal and state agencies are unpredictable. They do go up and down. But I continue to be really proud and, and surprised sometimes at the aggressiveness that some of the leadership team members have in, in their makeup when it comes to going after grants. We, we just got another one the other day that we did not think we were gonna get connected to STEM education that will, will be coming to, to celebrate a little bit. So we're well aware that we have that obligation to try to find other ways to fund and to, to produce the quality work that we're doing with our kids. So I'll be, I'll be coming back to you for that. And then ultimately that we do have this overarching goal that we've had for a couple years now together to really work on developing a fiscally responsible budget that still focuses on growth and achievement around inclusive culture, responding to the individual needs of our kids, providing equitable access and ultimately getting them prepared for college and career so that they can positively influence the world. And I know that's a really thick sentence right there, but I think it encapsulates the work that all the educators in the Rockport Public Schools are focusing on. We have already begun this process of identifying staffing and programmatic priorities. So we have a, a good amount of workshop time tomorrow morning where we want to focus on the glass half-full work. We want to look at our strategy for district improvement. We want to look at the priorities of the district, the needs of the district and come up with that group of goals and tasks, as we did last year, so that the budget book will be very reflective of, hey, this is where we want to go and why and how. And then the reality of running a, a small school district, having declining enrollment, having tight budgets, having to be respectful of the taxpayer dollar, all comes into play. So we will also be developing the strategy to close the budget gap, similar to the, the way we did last year. We will come to the next school committee meeting with a budget overview, with a rollover for two thousand twenty-six that will clearly show you where the growth and, and and the reductions are, not reductions in budgetary needs, but maybe in reductions in different lines. Some salary lines have gone up, transportation has gone up and down. So you'll see a nice overview that, where June has sort of rolled that budget over, so to speak. And she's included things in there already, such as the cost for contractual obligations already, the potential for current negotiations that are ongoing. So all of those things will be rolled into a very, very preliminary budget overview that we will show you publicly next, next meeting. And at that same time, we will start to have very careful conversations about how to close the gap that exists. The gap right now is right around a million dollars. So it's a substantial gap right now that we'll be, we'll be looking to close. Just if you recall, last year, the gap was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, right in that area. And that we actually closed the gap around a million because we had had some positions and retirements that had come in after the, the original town meeting vote. So in total, we actually did reduce around a million dollars last year. So while that is a large number, I'm confident that we can attain it. And I'm working currently with the town administrator, who is working with the select board to come up with a percentage increase that is palatable, that makes sense for all of us. So as soon as I feel confident with that conversation, that we'll, we'll talk about that publicly as well. So that's where we are with the budget development. I wanted you to have the number, at least this week. I wanted the community to see the work that's being done. But I'm confident that if we continue to be really mindful of the work, the hard work that we have to do, that we'll continue on a good path. And we currently still have roughly two million dollars in that reserve. And as we hear tonight with special ed presentations, that, you know, that money is there purposefully. It's no different than your savings account at home. So you, you, our hope is to not have to tap into that reserve too often. We did touch it a little bit last year. And if we have to touch it a little bit to make the, the budget balance, we, we'll most likely have to give ourselves permission to do so, but right now, we're pretty confident that we can make all of this happen. And that's, that's where I am tonight. So unless you have any other thoughts or questions about budget right now?
I'm sorry if I go on, but I just, I feel compelled to say how much I think we appreciate the zero-based budgeting process. We appreciate the information that you bring to us. I think we appreciate that teachers have been in the room at just about every single meeting where we've discussed budget. It's so important for staff to be in the loop and for our community to understand where we are. It's extremely powerful to go to town meeting and hear our budget approved on a voice vote with not a single voice in that room that votes against it. And that only happens because there is such hard work and such preparation and because people are on the same page with select board, with finance committee. And it, it, it's a very powerful thing to see happen. And I, I suspect we all really appreciate the work that goes into this as well. So I thank you for that.
So we do have a need for executive session? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped, I'm sorry. That was not deliberate. That was, I'm sorry. That was not deliberate. Go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up, which this is a discussion that I've had with Mark and with Kathy, but I just wanted to sort of bring it up to the rest of the school committee. I will not belabor it because it is late. But the process for appointing the school committee member for Essex Tech, the last member was here for so long, he predated all of us with that, the, the whole process, far predated all of us. There's been sort of a history of Rockport, not a lot of communication, right? Which seems like it will be different with this new member. It was vacant for a little bit and a community member had come to me and then I passed it on to Mark and Kathy, that it was vacant and that they were interested. And the process sort of went forward. It was, it was apparently posted for ten days. This community member said they didn't see it, but the community member that was very interested, the process was maybe not as, it was, the law was followed, but there might be a way, three years from now, that we could work on sort of publicizing it so that everyone that's interested gets a chance and it maybe isn't just if you happen to hear it from your neighbor or whatever. So I think that it's really important. It's an important role. And I think it's been so long since we've gone through this process and had someone in this role. I just think that when this comes around again in three years, that we sort of look at how we're publicizing it, I guess, maybe how other towns do it and just be aware of the process.
And I'd be happy to go back to the town administrator too and just let him know that, you know, it's been, you're right, it's been a long time. And while it might have been admittedly clunky, let's make sure it's less clunky the next time we're on.
And whatever we can do, if that's the school management, whoever's responsibility that is, but I just think that it's really important to do that. And I, again, want him to think that it was something personal, but the process was clunky at least.
And hurrah, we had two people interested. Huzzah. That's amazing. Okay, so the next thing is, tonight we do have a need for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee. We will adjourn from executive session and will not reconvene in open session. So this requires a roll call vote. I will go first. Riley, yes?
Lorenz, yes?
Eltira, yes?
Oakes, yes?
Delisi, yes?